Good evening. I will convene the regular meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners for Monday, December 3, 2018. And as the acting county manager, I will be presiding over the meeting until the officers are elected and sworn in. Commissioner Helms will be offering the invocation this evening and leading the commissioners and the group in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States. Commissioner Helms?
All right. If you'd please bow with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask for your blessings on the task before us tonight. Please give us a wisdom and clear insight on our deliberations. May we set the example of leadership by walking the walk and demonstrating the respect that all we deserve. May you guide us to act honestly and respectfully in all matters before us. Please give special protection to our military, law enforcement, EMS, and fire, as they protect us on a daily basis. Finally, dear Lord, grant us humility and to always seek your will in all that we do and say. In thy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we will be administering the Oath of Office for Commissioners Elected. If Commissioner-elect Rait would please come forward to receive his oath of office. Ms. Carol Reader will be administering the oath of office for Commissioner-elect Rait. Yes, please.
(Inaudible).
Do you, Dennis Rait, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Commissioner of the County of Union, so help you God?
I do.
Do you, Dennis Rait, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof?
I do.
And that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
(Inaudible).
Do you, Dennis Rait, swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of Commissioner of the County of Union, according to the best of your skill and ability, according to the law, so help you God?
I do.
Commissioner-elect Rushing, would you please come forward to receive your oath of office? Ms. Lynn West, our clerk, will be administering the oath of office for Commissioner Rushing.
Do you, Stony D. Rushing, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Commissioner for the County of Union, so help you God? Do you, Stony D. Rushing, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I do.
Do you, Stony D. Rushing, swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of Commissioner for the County of Union, according to the best of your skill and ability, according to laws, so help you God?
Commissioner-elect Simpson, would you please come forward? Ms. West will be administering Commissioner Simpson's oath of office.
Do you, Jerry B. Simpson, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Commissioner for the County of Union, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Jerry B. Simpson, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Jerry B. Simpson, swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of Commissioner for the County of Union, according to the best of your skill and ability, according to laws, so help you God?
Please join me in congratulating the newly-elected Commissioners. I will now open the floor for nominations for Chairman, and we will vote on the nominations in the order in which they are received. Commissioner Rushing?
Thank you. I would like to nominate Richard Helms, Sr., as Chairman.
Any further nominations?
I'd like to place a nomination, Commissioner Dennis Rait. Dennis is new to the board. He has a lot of experience in agriculture, construction, education. He could be a great leader.
Any further nominations? With that, I'll entertain a motion that the nominations be closed.
I make the motion to close them.
Thank you. So we'll vote in the order the nominations were made. First nominated by Stony Rushing, Commissioner Richard Helms for Chairman. All opposed?
You want to ask?
Yes, I'm going to go to the next one. Yes, sir. And next, we've got Commissioner Dennis Rait nominated by Commissioner Jerry Simpson. All in favor, Commissioner Rait? All opposed? Commissioner Chairman will be Commissioner Helms. We will move forward with our nominations for Vice Chairman. Yes, Commissioner Helms?
I'd like to make the motion to nominate Dennis Rait as Vice Chairman. As Commissioner Rushing, I mean Commissioner Simpson pointed out, his background in this county is impeccable. I think he makes a great Vice Chairman.
Any other nominations? With that, all in favor of the nomination of Commissioner Rait for Vice Chairman. Unanimous. Congratulations Chairman Helms and Vice Chairman Rait. And I will now turn the meeting over to Chairman Helms.
Thank you. Do we need to take those off first?
Yes. Oh, I apologize. Yes, I skipped that page. Thank you, Ms. West. I think it got stuck in my pages here. We will now move to the oath of office. Ms. West will move to the podium. If the two of you can go up, and she will move forward with the oath of office for both of you.
Do you, Richard B. Helms, Sr., solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Chair of the Board of Commissioners for the County of Union, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Richard B. Helms, Sr., solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Richard B. Helms, Sr., swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of Chair of the Board of Commissioners for the County of Union, according to the best of your skill and ability, according to laws, so help you God?
Do you, Dennis Rait, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Commissioner for the County of Union, so help you God?
I do.
Do you, Dennis Rait, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I do.
Do you, Dennis Rait, swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of Commissioner for the County of Union, according to the best of your skill and ability, according to laws, so help you God?
Okay?
Yes.
There's a reason we have to move the chairs around. Lynn has to keep us straight. You want to stay close. Thank you, Lynn. Appreciate you. This manager, if you would like to address the approval of elected officials' bonds?
Yes, sir. The next two items I will address. The first is the approval of elected officials' bonds. Elected positions of the sheriff and register of deeds are required by North Carolina General Statute to maintain personal bonds while in office. Individuals are responsible for securing these personal bonds. The bond for the sheriff is $5,000, and the bond for the register of deeds is $25,000. And the action requested tonight is for the board to approve the bond amounts for the sheriff of $5,000 and register of deeds for $25,000.
Make a motion that we approve bond's amount for the sheriff of $5,000 and register of deeds is $25,000. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None.
Then the next item, item seven, employees' bonds. The finance director and tax administrator are required by North Carolina General Statute to maintain personal bonds. Individuals are responsible for securing these personal bonds. The finance director is required to carry a bond in the amount of $100,000, and the bond for the tax administrator is $60,000. The action requested tonight is to approve the bond amounts for the finance director of $100,000 and the tax administrator of $60,000.
Okay, make a motion that the action requested be approved. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we have the opportunity to recognize our employees. We have a number of employees that have dedicated their time and service to Union County, and we'd like to show our appreciation by recognizing. First group, who's five years, there's Jennifer Tyson with Growth Management, Lourdes Garcia with Human Services, Stephen Eason with the Sheriff's Office, Kendall Miles with the Sheriff's Office, and Jill Page with Human Services. All above had five years. Additionally, with 10 years, we have Pamela Hypes with Human Services, Jamark Ames with the Sheriff's Office, 10 years. With 15 years, we have Steve Farrell with Administrative Services, and Mendel Miles with the Sheriff's Department, 15 years also. This month, December, we had a number of retirements we'd like to recognize. Mary Funterberg with the Sheriff's Office with 16 years, Sharon Gullion with Public Works with 18 years, David Shaw with Administrative Services with 14 years, Sheila Simpson, Tax Administration with 22 years, Laura Webb, Administration Services with 14 years, and Lynn Yao with the Sheriff's Office with 28 years. Again, we want to thank these individuals for their service and dedication to Union Next, we have informal comments. And we have one individual signed up. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their name, stating whether they're a resident of Union County, indicating the municipality which they reside, if any, and state the topic about which they intend to speak. Each speaker will have three minutes to make their remarks. A speaker may not yield any of his or her time to another speaker. Speakers may not discuss matters which are subject to public hearings, and they must be courteous in their language and presentation. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Speakers may leave written comments or supporting documentation, if they have any, with the Assistant Manager. First, we have Loretta Clinton.
(Inaudible). If I come often enough, maybe you all will get that pronunciation.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm used to it. Loretta Malonson, 2923 Meadow Creek Lane in Monroe, and I am a resident of the city of Monroe and Union County. I'm just here to be sure that none of you Commissioners forget about litter. I am here as a private citizen, but also as the founding member of Litter Busters. We have addressed you all in the past, and I've had the opportunity of interacting with several of you in an informal way, and I appreciate the verbal support that's been given. But I'm here to tell you that we need more than just people like myself that pick up the litter that accumulates. We need an awareness. Perhaps we can create more awareness with consequences. I really have a problem seeing anything being done by, in an outward, visible way, by the county and by my city to address the ongoing problem of litter. So I don't know how to ask you to accomplish this, except to consider giving litter a bigger voice in the new year. You all have such a wonderful website. You have a Facebook page. I think you tweet and Twitter and all of that, and I'm hoping that litter can become a topic of conversation, and perhaps in the future to form some sort of task force, where we have representatives from the county, private citizens from different cities, and really take a hard look at what we might do to turn this problem around. Litter Busters has collected over 600 bags of litter in two years with a very small workforce, and it's not going to get better if we don't start talking about the problem, creating awareness, educating, and consequences. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Loretta, and I'm not going to try to pronounce your name again, but I tell you, would you do me a favor, please? Will you contact Ms. West next week or later this week and set up a time where you and I can talk?
Oh, I'd love to do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have our additions, deletions, and our adoption of the agenda, and we have an item that we'd like to add. I think all the board members have a copy of the schools. It's a, some financial adjustments to the transportation facility bond project budget from 12 and a half million to 13,280, and they are going to provide the funds out of their current budget. And then also, there is a request to utilize 199,000 to CIP funds dedicated, that were dedicated to roofing projects. They need to purchase some land in Piedmont. I think they need to thank Dennis for that, to have those funds. But we'll add that to our consent agenda. And also, I'd like to ask that item number 23 be removed and placed on next, the 19th agenda. Is there any other additions, deletions?
Motion to approve is amended.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous to be sure. Next, we have our consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt our consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have our old business.
Yes, Chairman Helms. Item 22 is an update on our Southwest Union County Regional Library Project. Several of you have asked for an update on this project, and as you will recall, this was a project that was approved by the voters in November of 2016. Initial direction for the project was to attempt co-location with South Piedmont Community College, who also had bonds approved at the same time for new community college facilities. After several months, it was apparent that co-location would not be successful, and staff began the process of moving forward with a county-only project. Additionally, the organization was without a permanent facilities director for a portion of this time, which added to staff's delay in progress on this particular project. Tonight, Jeff Kate and our Community Services Director is here to provide a presentation on the project and answer any questions you may have. He will provide historical context and other details regarding the project. Additionally, our library director, Nina Meadows, is with us this evening if there are any specific questions regarding library operations. And Christopher Boy, our Facilities Director, is also here if there are specific questions regarding construction and other facility-related issues. So I'll now ask Mr. Kate to go forward with his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ms. Lancaster. After that introduction, I think my presentation should be relatively short for you, but I do want to thank you for the opportunity to be here and to share an update on our Southwest Regional Library Project. It's just a matter of brief history, as Ms. Lancaster shared. This project really began in around 1999, when the Board of Commissioners at the time made a decision to adopt a regional library approach. Prior to then, it's my understanding is that each municipality was vying for a library facility, and the board decided that a more efficient way to provide library services would be through a regional approach. Part of that plan included two facilities for the western part of Union County, one being in Weddington, one being in Waxall, both of which were designed, or at least planned for, 20,000 square foot library facility in both locations. This plan was in existence up until 2006, at which time the Board of Commissioners set aside money within the CIP program, let me catch back up, approximately 1.77 million dollars, to start the process toward building a facility in the Weddington area. In 2007, as everyone knows, we went through a pretty significant economic downturn and recession, and the library board came back to the Board of Commissioners and made a recommendation, made a recommendation which the Board of County Commissioners adopted, which was to move toward a super-regional perspective, which in essence would take both the Weddington and the Waxall facility and combine those into a larger facility in the 35,000 square foot range as a way to be more efficient with dollars, construction and operational-wise. And that was the plan moving forward from 2008. But of course, with the economy being what it was, that project kind of languished, and the opportunity arose in, let me get it, 2016, in some discussions with South Piedmont Community College and the Board of Commissioners, that SPCC was looking to build a facility on the western part of Union County, and as part of that project was also looking at a library facility within the context of that Western Union campus. So the opportunity arose, and many of you that are on this board now took advantage of that opportunity and placed a bond referendum on the 2016 general election of $10.1 million toward the development of that Southwest regional, super-regional library facility. As part of that bond referendum that was placed, you also gave staff the direction to work with South Piedmont Community College to try to develop a partnership, look for a way to collaborate, a way again to extend those tax dollars and be as efficient as we possibly could. So we began the process of working with SPCC and their new president, Dr. Farr, and their staff, and over the next several months, essentially starting in January, and it took us through May, had numerous discussions with Dr. Farr, with their staff, and it was determined that state statute did not provide the opportunity to have a community college library on the same proximity with a public library. And as we learned that, it became very apparent that the direction from you, the board, that we worked with, SPCC, had basically run its course, and that legally we could not put our facility in the same location. So it put us in a position then where we had to reevaluate, and we were looking at a standalone project as opposed to one that would be working with SPCC. So our public works staff began the process of putting together an RFQ for architectural services and developed that in conjunction with our legal staff and our library staff, and was able to get that RFQ pulled together. And we went out for proposals on October the 24th. That process completed November the 28th, when we received 11 pro- That process completed November the 28th, when we received 11 proposals. And we were able to narrow that list down to seven interviews that would take place in January of 2018. We went through that review process, and a decision was made about mid-February of 2018 to start negotiations with the firm that we currently have a contract with, which is Little Diversified Architects. And in March of 18, we conducted our initial meeting with Little to discuss scope and fees, and that's where the fund really started. We went through an extensive process of negotiation with them. And as we went through the discussions, what we realized is the scope of the project was so complex, because the way the RFQ was written, that it would take those services all the way from program planning and site identification, all the way through to construction. So we were trying to negotiate a scope and fees based on that full length of the project process. Fortunate for Union County and for our process, Chris Boyd, Christopher Boyd, who is our facilities director now, came on board with Union County and looked at the project, gave us some advice, "Guys, you need to break this down into phases." And we recognized that we were getting nowhere quickly with the way that we were approaching it, agreed with Chris, and proceeded then to break the project down into several phases that would allow for us to negotiate scope of services as well as fees. And once that was done, quickly started to move through the process with Little. So we finally developed our contract with Little in September 17th of 2018, and held an initial kickoff meeting in November of 2018. Following that kickoff meeting, we placed a schedule of activities and milestones that were to be accomplished. First of which is a group of meetings that we will be hosting actually tomorrow, starting tomorrow morning with staff, stakeholder meetings. And then we'll enter into public meetings, starting tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock at Wesley Chapel. And then we will follow up with subsequent meetings on Wednesday, December the 5th. Those will take place at Weddington at 9 o'clock and Waxall at noon on Wednesday. And that will be the beginning of the process for program development, which is essentially what takes us to the layout of the facility. Simultaneous to that process, as part of the agreement of scope of services, is we are also working on site identification, site selection. That process was outlined for the architectural firm through criteria that was established by our library staff, as well as the library board, of what specific attributes that that property should have. I will share with you that we have provided the architectural firm with all of the county-owned property to make sure that they were aware of any properties that we had within that service area on the western side of Union County, as well as they are also looking at other properties as well. But that is to take place simultaneously. So to give you an idea of where we're going moving forward, the design team has given us a schedule that provides us with an idea of where they're going to be in this process based on the information obtained over the next two days and moving through the holidays. We anticipate that they are going to be able to provide us with the materials associated with what will make the layout of the project, but also provide us with some recommendations with regard to location of the facility as well. They've given us a date of mid-February, a timeframe of mid-February, to have all of that information provided to us. Our plan is to provide that draft information to the library board for their review, because they will be tasked, or are tasked, with bringing you a recommendation with regard to site location. And then we will have the architectural firm, along with their subcontractor, Bright Spot, to come back to the board, provide you with a presentation for the entire project to include the site location as well. So as Ms. Lancaster mentioned, we have, Chris Boyd is with us this evening, as well as Nina Meadows, who is our library director. So if there are any questions that you have that I can't field, certainly they are more than capable of filling in for me. So that's the context of where we are at the present time. We understand that this process has been much lengthier than any of us would have preferred. And I will leave you with our final slide, which is an Albert Einstein quote, "The only thing you absolutely have to know is the location of the library." We recognize that is the big question that needs to be answered, but we want to make sure, too, that it's a project that the entire community can be proud of. So if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those and share what we have.
Commissioner Ray.
How much money are we working with? Is that 1.776 still in CIP money?
Those original funds that were set aside, and I believe it was 2008, were used, repurposed in 2013 for the sheriff's firing range. So really, it's 10.1 million is the number.
So it really didn't need to be on there?
I think that's the history of the project, because at that time, it was determined that 1.7 wouldn't be enough to do it, and that in the future, if it were going to be done, it would have to be a bond project.
Commissioner Simpson, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just curious, will we be given options with regard to site selection, or are they going to offer us a single site?
Their responsibility, as I understand it, is to give you their recommendation. Certainly, if the board wishes, I'm sure that some of the other sites in consideration could be provided, that would give you some other data to work with.
Commissioner Ray, do you have something else?
Yeah, I would agree with Commissioner Simpson. I think we need to be brought several sites to choose from, maybe the top three or five. And our county school property that they may not have plans for, is that going to be looked at, too?
Yes, sir. We gave them all of the county property, which would be inclusive of the school properties as well.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, sir.
Get feeling better.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, that concludes our agenda. Nice briefing tonight. Ms. Manager, your comments, please.
Yes, Chairman Helms. I would like to offer my congratulations to Chairman Helms and to Vice Chairman Ray as we move forward into the holiday season, into our next budget year. And as a follow-up to our retreat that we had on Thursday, our budget retreat, I'm going to pass down to you, not for any action, but I had indicated to you on Thursday that I would provide a draft budget schedule and some additional information. And so you have a memo here and a draft budget calendar that we will discuss further at your next meeting, but I wanted you to see what our calendar is looking like going forward for the months of December through June. And then a couple of items that I'll be following up with and writing around workload measures for the fire marshal, environmental health, and building inspections, lap salary information, and also some topics that we are already working in your schedule moving forward. So I just wanted to provide that to you tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Agnes.
Yeah, I had the opportunity to attend the ribbon cutting for the Monroe bypass expressway, whatever you want to call it these days. I've had the opportunity to drive on it several times since then, and as well as my bride has enjoyed the quick movement from one end of the county to the other. So if you have not utilized that wonderful resource, I encourage you to do so. Certainly want to extend our deepest sympathies to the Bush family and thank them for the many years of dedicated service that President Bush provided. And congratulations to our newly-elected, re-elected, in some cases, Commissioners. And with that, I wish everyone a good evening.
Commissioner Rushen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd also like to thank everyone for the support this year in the election, and would just say congratulations to Chairman Helms and Vice Chairman Ray, and congratulations to Commissioner Simpson on his reelection as well. I'm very excited that in January, we'll be looking at the Public Works Master Plan and having discussions on that. And I know that water was one of the center points in my campaign, and we really have a good opportunity here to set Union County in a direction to provide that service to a lot of the residents. So look forward to working that in the coming year, and also the other exciting challenges we have coming before us this year.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe it was Calvin Coolidge who said that nothing in the place will take the world of, nothing takes place in the world as does persistence. And Commissioner Ray and I, we go way back, and we were having some reminiscing a little bit ago, and Dennis told me he ran for commissioner when he was 24. So I appreciate his desire to serve Union County, and I certainly congratulate him and welcome him to the board. And I'd also like to thank the many citizens of Union County for giving me another opportunity to serve them. I'm certainly humbled by my reelection. Wish everyone a good evening.
Commissioner Ray.
Well, I'd first like to thank everybody. The only, in Union County, the only difference between y'all, where y'all are sitting and where I'm sitting, is your faith in all of us up here. And I intend to earn that trust and faith. I think we have a great board to go forward. I can't tell you enough good things about all of them. I look forward to having fun with Jerry again. We were kind of, a couple of years in high school, we had some good times. And then after, you know, we just, we were just high school country boys together. I appreciate everybody that helped me in the campaign. I appreciate everybody's patience with me. I'll talk to anybody, my wife will tell you. She gives me four hours a day on the phone, and that's all. But if you have something to say, and you need to tell me or anybody else, I'll be glad to talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to welcome Dennis. Dennis worked real hard to get here. I think he's going to be a great asset to this board, and I look forward to welcoming him. Congratulations, Dennis.
Thank you.
Also, congratulations to Commissioner Rushen and Commissioner Simpson for their reelection. We'll have, I think, I agree with Dennis that we'll have an opportunity to do it a lot for Union County, and I look forward to that. And I see out in the audience Barbara Harrison, and I'm going to embarrass you, Barbara, but she sat up here for six months, did a phenomenal job, and I just want to personally thank you again for all that you did. She was extremely thorough and diligent about her responsibilities, and she should be proud of her service to Union County. And then finally, today is the 250th anniversary of Charlotte. So wish them well, and then I wish you a good evening. Thank you.
I motion to adjourn.
Aye. Aye.